We're so glad you're here.
All right, board members, it is 11:10. We will go ahead and get started with this morning's work session. And the first topic is being presented by our Auditor General, Ms. Esther Coe. And so I will be turning it over to her highly capable hands so she can walk us through today's report with a goal of giving me about a 15, 20-minute presentation and then opening it up for questions from board members.
Thank you, Megan. Good morning, everyone. So today, the Office of Auditor General, we call ourselves OAG, is pleased to present our first issuance of the FY19 Midyear Audit Report. The concept of the Midyear Audit Report came from a proposal and concurrence by the Audit Committee as a way to raise the awareness of OAG's mission and accomplishments. Within the report, we highlighted the roles and responsibility of OAG within FCPS, shared the results of recent audits, and communicated upcoming projects with all of you. The timeframe of work that we reported in this midyear report cover mainly between July 1 and December 31, 2018, with a few reporting also for our accomplishments during FY18. As a heads up, you will see us again because we will be doing a final annual audit report for FY19 in June so that you will see us and share more information with you after we complete the entire fiscal year. For today's work session, as Megan has mentioned, I will first walk you through the highlights of the report. As you can see at my back, and then you can also pull up from bottom as well, then I would love to receive and respond to your questions. So with just a blink of eyes, I have served as the Auditor General for FCPS for one and a half year now, and we are delighted that the School Board established the OAG as an independent entity within FCPS to promote accountability and transparency through independent audits and reviews. My office has completed all assignments per the approved audit plan on time and continue to track and follow up on open audit recommendations. In addition, we also managed the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline and performed timely and thorough review of all the inquiries received. This year, we are also very excited to report that we have implemented an audit software, and the name of it is called Pantana, to enhance the audit efficiency and effectiveness. So if you could pull up the table of contents, that you can see that there are three major sessions within the report. The first part is about OAG, the second is OAG results, and the third one is in-progress and upcoming OAG projects. Pages 1 through 4 talks about OAG, so as you can tell from the name, it talks about who we are and what we do. OAG's mission is to independently determine whether the ongoing processes of FCPS are adequately designed, functioning in an efficient and effective manner, and be fully accountable to the Fairfax County citizens. Currently, we are in office with six auditors, including myself and Theresa. We also have one admin support. We are in the process of hiring one more auditor, and by then, we will be fully staffed. At OAG, we have four main pillars of work, and I love to use the vision to show that. It is on page one of the report, so you can see four different columns, starting with Risk Assessment, Internal Audit, Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline, and the last column is Outreach and Education. So starting with Risk Assessment, it is a process that we perform annually to identify audit topics based upon the risk level and the opportunity to improve. We will be discussing more about the FY 2020 Risk Assessment Process later on during the presentation. For the second pillar, which is Internal Audit, so obviously, this is our bread and butter of what we do. And then the third column is the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline that our office maintained. This is an anonymous hotline where employees or community members can share their concerns. The hotline is only one of the many ways that my office receives concerns. Other ways include emails, direct walk-ins, mails, et cetera. As of December 31 of 2018, we received a total of 11 inquiries, where we reviewed them in a timely manner according to the applicable laws, policy, and regulations. And for the last pillar, which is the Outreach and Education effort, and then our effort on this area is detailed on page four of the report. So first of all, as you can see, there is a B at the bottom of page four, and this is our periodicals, which call the Audit Buzz. So we are trying to summarize our audit results in an easy-to-understand-and-digest format for our employees and also for the community members to understand the key outcomes from the audit. The Audit Buzz is on the news you choose, so we just checked as of last week, we got around 430 subscribers, which is a raise from what we reported. I do not know exactly who the subscribers are because we only see their emails, but definitely the words of audit and compliance have been spread to a bigger population. During FY 2018 also, OAG presented to over 500 FCPS employees, and I'm very grateful for the support from Dr. Braybrand and from the leadership team and from the principals to allow us to go to the different schools, meet with different school-based and centralized employees where we can share the audit outcomes and learning objective. So moving on to the second session of the report, which is the Audit Results, so the OAG results, they are highlighted under pages five to 10. So all the audit results that we reported here have been discussed and concurred at the Audit Committee meetings. We would like to take this opportunity to report the key learning objective and outcome of this audit with you all. So there are three audits that we cover in this report. The first one, which is on page five, is the FY18 Local School Activity Fund Audit, and we also cover the Business Process Turnover Audits, and the last one is the Specific Contract Audit. For the first two audits, they are both school-related. We perform the Local School Activity Fund Audit, and we often refer them as the LSAF Audit each year according to the Code of Virginia. We provided an opinion that the LSAF financial statements, which have a balance of approximately 22 millions a year, that were presented fairly and were properly stated as of June 30, 2018. In addition to issuing the audit opinion, we also issued something called the Exceptions Report, and you may wonder what that is. So this is similar to the External Audit Report side where the auditors will report a management comment letter, meaning to summarize some of the exceptions that we found, they are not material to impact the audit opinion, but we would like to bring it to the management consideration for further training and education. So within the midyear report, we included some analysis from page five to page seven for you to understand the landscape of the exceptions identified. And as you can see on the pie chart on page five, most of our schools, 110 of our schools do receive a no-exceptions report, and then with some other school received some smaller percentage of exceptions. And we have referred to schools with more in terms of number of exceptions or higher-risk exceptions to the Financial Services Team for Education and Support. Then the second type of audit is the Business Process Turnover Audit, which is on page seven. So this type of audit is school-related as well, and we conducted them when there is a change in school employees, specifically when there is a change in principals or in finance technicians who are kind of like the day-to-day help us to safeguard the financial position at schools. The population that we have examined so far in the first half of the fiscal year are seven schools, including a total of 3 million of population in terms of transactions. And in addition, during FY19, we included the concept of continuous audit in the school-based audits. So what it is about is we put all the transactions that happen at schools into a data analysis tool and try to highlight if there are any uncommon or unusual transactions so that we can review them earlier rather than wait for a routine audits scheduled. And the last audit that I would like to highlight to you all is the audit that we completed on ISD, the Instructional Services Department, and the IT Contracts Audit. And the summary of that audit is listed on page eight of the report. And our audit found that both departments, ISD and IT, demonstrated appropriate contract management responsibilities. And there is one moderate finding that we highlighted, which is related to a disconnect between the departments and the Office of Procurement Services as it relates to the assignment of the contract management responsibility. And the risk is that there may be some departments unaware of their contract management responsibilities as currently assigned by the procurement office. And the root cause of this finding can be attributed to the fact that currently, we do not have specific FCPS regulations related to who and how the contract management responsibility should be assigned. And we are very grateful that the Chief Operating Office took ownership of this challenge and is leading the charge to coordinate a corrective action with a due date of April 30th, so it's coming very soon. So they will be including more verbiage within the current regulations for procurement to clearly outline how the management responsibility will be dedicated. So last but not the least, within the report, we discuss about the in-progress and upcoming OAG projects, and they are listed under pages 11 through 14. So in the remaining six months of the fiscal year, we will be completing more BPTA, which are the Business Process Turnover Audits. We are planning to complete a total of 20 during this fiscal year. And currently, we have three centralized process audits going on. The first one is the Use of Trades and Staffing Reserve. The second one is the Medicaid Reimbursement Program Audit. And the third one is the Payroll Audit. And in March, we will be starting the Safety and Security Compliance Audit, focusing on validating whether FCPS follows the Virginia Code and meets the school safety reporting requirements per VDOE. And in the summer, we will be completing the FY19 LSAF Financial Audit. So we definitely have a full play for the remaining four, five months of the fiscal year. And we are also in the process of performing the FY20 Risk Assessment and Audit Plan Prioritization right now. And the highlight of the Risk Assessment Process is described on page 18, sorry, page 13 and page 14 of the midyear report. Yep, exactly. Thank you. So on page, at the bottom of page 13, we outlined about the types of risks that we are focusing on. So we are focusing on the financial risk, the potential reputational, as well as the operational risk as listed under there. And on the front part of page 14, we also laid out like a timeline and the tasks that we are going to complete in the upcoming month. And particularly in the month of March, we will be reaching out to all of you and the Audit Committee member to solicit feedback and inputs. And then we would have discussions at the Audit Committee meetings first in May and June, and then we will bring back with the proposal to the School Board to discuss and review in July. So with that, that is my short summary of the report, and I'm happy to respond to any questions or comments that you have.
Great, thank you, Esther. I do have some board members who have indicated they want to be added on, and I see two more. I do want to first say before we take questions that, Esther, it has been shared with me frequently that your collaborative style has been greatly appreciated and has been such an asset to the division. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly express the appreciation of the board, that not only do you deliver extremely professional and substantive reports and information to the board, you and your team, but that you and your staff, all of you, have created such a collaborative approach to your work that I think it truly enhances the services you provide to the School Division and to the citizens of Fairfax County. So, oh, our superintendent was...
And I have two of my audit members at the back, too.
And can you introduce them just briefly?
Sure. So on my right is Theresa Weatherman, is our Deputy Auditor General. And then I know you all are familiar with Theresa, so a lot of kudos to her. And then at the back, we have two gentlemen sitting behind Scott. One is Paul Hicks, and then also Chris Elliott. Both of them are auditors for our office.
Great, thank you. All right, we will begin with Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Karen Kies-Gamara, Ryan McElveen, and Janie Strauss.
Esther, thank you, and thank you to the whole team because it really is a collaborative team, and you exemplify what we want all of our teams in the organization to be doing. So thank you very much for that, and I thought that your report was very thorough. One of the questions which you and I have talked about in the past, and I continue to want to know more details, is every time you offer an audit report, you also provide recommendations to staff. Staff responds to them, and then there are some that are continuously outstanding. On page 10, you have a list of the audits that have been done since 2017, and the recommendations as well as those that have been closed and the 16 that continue to be outstanding. Two questions. One, I know there are some outstanding recommendations prior to 2017, and so it would be helpful to have the list of those outstanding recommendations as well. And secondly, if you could actually provide us a list of what are those outstanding recommendations and a determination as to why we're still waiting for them. In particular, I see that there are the substitute management. We have four outstanding recommendations, private transportation, two, workers' comp, zero, contracting and procurement, which is, as many people know, an area of interest for me. We have three, and we have facilities maintenance, five, as well as two in ACE. So more specific what they are, and I don't expect you to answer them all right now, but it would be as a next step to provide to the board what are those outstanding recommendations.
Sure. May I just respond quickly to your comments, Karen? So for the first one, I'm glad to say that for all the 2017 recommendations have been closed. So I think that that's why here for all the 16 open items, they are related to the 2018 audits. So it's really a great, I mean, compliment for the leadership teams and the staff that we are working with so we are able to close anything that before 2018.
So what you're saying is you've moved some of those recommendations into the work that you're doing in 2018?
Actually, they are closed. We reviewed them together with the management team and confirmed that the actions that we proposed from the 2017 audits have been completed.
Okay, thank you.
And then for the 2018 open recommendations, the 16 that you recommended, we definitely can provide a spreadsheet to the School Board members afterwards as a next step. And those also have been discussed during the Audit Committee as well, about the specifics, about each one of them, which one has been delayed, or maybe some of them, actually, they are not due yet. So we have a summary sheet that I am happy to, you know, send it as a next step so all the School Board members can see.
Can I ask that if you are providing that to the Audit Committee on a periodic basis, that that report actually be shared to the whole School Board just so that they're more aware of what's going on?
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Karen Kies-Gamara, followed by Ryan McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, want to thank you for this thorough report. I think it's excellent. I participated in the committee meetings, and I know how openly we are discussing these issues. Much of my comment has to do, and I think you contribute significantly, to us being able to deliver transparency as to how we as a board, or I am sorry, as a system, are operating. So a lot of my comments are going to deal with that issue. I took a quick look at how we're, the audit, what comes up when I type in audit. And so I would, I'm not sure whether this is you working with the Communications Department, and he probably, Dr. Braybrand probably already knows the direction I'm going, but I would really love for the public to be having an opportunity to more clearly see at a glance, whether that's a video, or whether that's charts, or how things are, you know, something that's easy for the public to maneuver. I see a lot of text when I go to the things that come up under audit, which is less user-friendly, I think. But I think that if we could have something akin to a scoreboard or something of that nature, I think that, you know, it would be, go a long way in terms of how the public views how we're handling things and deliver on that transparency goal.
So I think that's a great suggestion, Karen. I'm always trying to think about if I am just a regular citizen, right, and I don't have the audit background, then how can I comprehend the audit objective or outcomes to us? So currently, myself and my team are looking into way of how to provide, you know, so to speak, education or training for people who are outside of the office. So we're looking at maybe providing kind of like online video and training. So we are trying to put it within our resources that we can do, so it's definitely is something that we are looking into. The purpose of the Audit Buzz is one of that is to use less words, but more chart and more visual arts to help people to embrace the audit outcomes.
I think that's great, and as I said, this may indeed be joint efforts. I'm not expecting the audit folks to do all of this, but I do think there's a communication element in all of the things that I looked at. I did not see the fraud hotline prominently set up or visible. So I think all of, there are some steps that we can take to improve that. I think education is a part of it, but also the community being able to understand how you're doing it in a, kind of, at a glance, whether that's a video, or whether that's a chart, or whatever. So I appreciate, I think this is excellent. I would like to, for the community to, you know, be able to say, if I have a question, that number be readily available, and if I have a question with respect to how things are being done, that that information can be easily accessible.
Is that all, Ms. Gamara? Okay. Mr. McElveen, followed by Ms. Strauss, and then Mr. Moon.
Thank you. First, I just want to start with two questions about ongoing or future audits that are outlined. I was curious about the timing of the Trades Position Audit because I know a member of the board who is not here now had brought forward a budget amendment on that, and I think it'd be useful for the board to have that information before we commit to something in a budget.
So we are planning to have the audit report presented to the Audit Committee in March, so it's next month.
Excellent, so that'll be before we vote on our final budget. Secondly, could you speak just very briefly to either the status or your vision for the security audit, because I know that's something the public is very interested in?
Yeah, so Ryan, for this audit, we are focusing on the compliance aspects to the regulation per Virginia Code and also the VDOE requirements of conducting school safety audits. So I think that will be pretty much compliance basis because I know that FTS is currently doing more of what is compared to the industry golden standard, what is the requirement, and I believe FTS definitely is the expert in that. And for us, our audit is more tailored towards the compliance aspect, to make sure that we meet the state setup requirements.
Okay, great, that's useful. And then finally, one of the things is the Audit Committee is looking at priorities for next year that I would like for you to consider is, in the area of IT, you know, I've spoken with a lot of people about where we're going as a system in terms of cloud computing as opposed to housing massive data centers and where there might be savings possible in our system, both from a space perspective as well as a financial perspective. So take that and do what you will with it. Thank you.
Great. Mr. McElveen, you had mentioned reference to the trades. Ms. Coe, can you clarify again what the focus of that audit is? Because I believe it has to do with trading for positions. And that's perfectly understandable. We just want to make sure for the board and the audience that we're all clear on that audit.
The focus of the audit, the testing on the trade section, is looking at the trading of funds or positions for other positions, staffing in the schools.
Exactly, exactly. And then I also have our CFO, Lee Burden, who was going to add a few words.
That's correct. The budget amendment is addressing trades personnel like maintenance.
That was helpful, Mr. McElveen, because you weren't going to be the only one who might have misinterpreted that terminology. So that's a reminder to all of us that sometimes we get shorthand when we know what it might be referencing to. So I now have Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you very much. Excellent, excellent report, I must say, as we are all cheering you on. The importance of good collaboration and communication and training and working with schools and with all of our departments, because I believe the best way to avoid fraud is good training, good bookkeeping, people understanding that you all are looking and helping so that it, that clearly creates very few opportunities then for fraud, because we're a very large organization and, you know, we can't guarantee that absolutely everybody is above board, but the better the training, the better the oversight, the more comfortable is the relationship between you and your staff and everybody within our organization, the more protected we are against fraud. So I'm very pleased to see how well all of that is working. I appreciate the newsletter, the buzz, because I do think that that goes a long way in helping everybody to understand what's going on. And Ms. Kies-Gamara, I just went into the search and put in audit. We are a lot better than we used to be because I was, because that's one of our challenges with our website is searching and how, you know, how effective, because we're used to Google and how effective a word search is. And on the one hand, I was pleased that under audit came up all of the various documents and things that we would expect to see under audit, but it would be also nice to have sort of a more visual, and I think you guys are working with that. Even your audit report has a lot more visuals on it, and I think the buzz provides that opportunity. So I think we're on the right path, and again, it's always helping the community to see easily what we do and where we're going. So I think we're partly, partly, partly... So I think we're partly, partly, partly down that road. And there are many other word searches that I can put in on search that come up with useless stuff. It's very hard. But I'm pleased to see that audit, at least on a word search, does get us partway down the road. So thank you all very much, and look forward with continued work on the audits. And I concur with Ms. Corbett Sanders. It's always important that where various findings, while not necessarily substantive, we want to make sure that controls are in place and that we're always up to date as to where we're going with that. So I think that I also support the next steps to make sure that we clearly know where we're going with that. So job well done. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. All right, I have Mr. Moon, and I have Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders for a go-back. Any other board members that wanted to be added to the list? Okay, Mr. Moon?
Okay, I actually have an audit request, and also a couple of points for clarification. Could you possibly audit why I am always the only one sitting on this side?
People like to walk out.
Because they want to see you. If they sit next to you, they cannot see you.
I see. That's wonderful.
I think.
God, that is great. Great answer. Great answer. Oh, my goodness. Okay, now. Now, on page number five, page number five, looking at Local School Activity Fund Financial Statement Audit. Assuming that these are the financial statements from schools.
Yes.
And we, I basically said we have about 198 schools and centers. And when I look at this pie chart, add up the numbers, it's 204. So if you could explain to me the discrepancy?
It's actually 204 sites that have Local School Activity Fund accounts. DSS maintains school activity fund accounts for multiple centers that don't have their own finance tax. So those are audited as part of this. Adult and Community Education, they are included as part of this. So when you add in all of the schools, the academies, the centers, plus DSS, Fairfax Adult, let's see, DSS, Fairfax Adult High School, ACE. And this year new was Career and Technical Education has funds. So those four department-like are counted as part of that group.
Okay. Now I understand it a little better. So it's not necessarily just the schools, but there are a few other programs added to that. Okay, thank you. The next one goes to, I think, page number 13. At the top paragraph, second sentence from the bottom, the risk of payments to fictitious employees will not be addressed in this audit. Could you tell me why that is so and how that is going to be addressed, if ever?
So when we scope this audit, Mr. Moon, we try to limit on the controls and processes that are managed by the payroll department. Because if we scope it, including the My Time of Fictitious Employee site, the risk of that, then it also touch upon my HR and other functions. So the thought process behind is, hey, let's have a very sustained scope of work, and let's complete the piece that is managed under Financial Services Payroll. And if we see any red flags, so to speak, about the time and attendance reporting out from this audit, we can add that to the FY20 audit topics.
Okay. And this is going to be reported to the Audit Committee when?
Yes. So this particular payroll audit will be reporting in May.
In May. So we will know when that is presented to Audit Committee, whether we may need to go beyond. Okay. That's fair. Thank you. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. All right, I have Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders for a go-back.
And it'll be brief. I just wanted to encourage you to keep engaging this Board as a whole. You do great work within the Audit Committee, and I am so appreciative, Ms. McGlaughlin, for what you're doing there. But as you know, the Audit, the Auditor General is only one of three people that reports directly to the whole Board. And so, and we did that because of the focus and intentionality of the Board on these important issues. So please, we love your Audit Buzz, and I'm very glad that you're going to be doing this on a more frequent and periodic basis. So thank you so much.
I also wanted to spotlight that, as Ms. Corbett Sanders referenced. It's encouraging to know that as the public tries to gain a greater understanding and appreciation for the Office of Auditor General, that as you had shared with the Audit Committee, having over 400 subscribers to your audit newsletter really does, I think, help in that public engagement that this Board has certainly been directed to as a priority. So that initiative on your part was great. So to my colleagues, two things as sort of a takeaway from today's mid-year reporting. Number one, as Ms. Ko mentioned, please start making notes, whether in your iPhone or your notepads or wherever you do that, to think about areas of focus, concern, interest that you've heard from in your own districts and out in the public about audit topics. And then also to think about getting the link from Ms. Ko and her office on her audit newsletter, so that we can put that into our newsletters as a way of spotlighting to our constituents that here is a great way to better understand and follow the work of the Auditor General for the school system. For the public who's watching, they may not realize that not only we are the 10th largest school system in the country with a $3 billion operating budget, but very few school systems around the country, even those that are large, similar to us, have incorporated either an Inspector General or an Auditor General role into their school divisions. And so this is, again, something that's extremely important, and it should be considered a best practice for large school divisions around the US. So again, I want to thank you and your staff for the great work you're doing and the ability to not only do good work for Fairfax County, but hopefully shaping and changing the national landscape in public schools for this type of valuable accountability and continuous improvement model. So thank you. We started 10 minutes late, and we are finishing 10 minutes early. So colleagues, at this point, we are scheduled to begin at 12:30 for the second session, I believe, since that's when it's advertised, Madam Chair, that we really do need to stick to starting at 12:30. So you've all earned yourselves a 40-minute break.
Okay. Excuse me, Megan. So is it the correct next steps from?
Just wanted to make sure. I realized you all had produced next steps. So, Madam Clerk, thank you for capturing those. So to my colleagues, we, as you can see from above on the next steps, your names are listed there. So I also want to make sure if there's any other next steps that were not captured, we do that now at this time. So for the first next step, page 10, provide a summary sheet regarding recommendations that remain open. Moving forward, share summary sheets with full Board when provided to Audit Committee. So that was Ms. Corbett Sanders. Does that, I don't...
It captures it.
It captures it? Okay. All right. Ms. Ko, does that seem clear enough? Or do you want some additional clarification?
Yes. I think what we will do is, at the time, let me share with the Audit Committee the list. It's a very easy-to-understand list about the status of the recommendations. I will share it with the full Board as well. So yes.
Excellent. And one of the things that the Audit Committee has put a focus on that when Ms. Ko is reporting on any projects related to audit, that we've put a dollar value where possible so that not only the Board, but the public can appreciate again the fiscal impact of those types of projects. So for the second next step, work with... I, I mean, okay. I was going to read through both of them, make sure they're correct, and then vote on them. But everybody's good with the first next step? Excellent. Second one, work with Office of Communications and Community Relations to make audit information available on webpage as usual friendly? More user-friendly. All right. So can we have support for that? Excellent. I will put in the plug as well that if this has not been done, because I know prior requests have been made. Our web, our website, when it was complying with federal requirements for accessibility, there was a change in what reports could be listed, what reports weren't there from the past. I would just like to reiterate, Dr. Braybrand, that I would appreciate whatever work that OCCR can continue to do in making sure that past reports and all current reports get listed to the webpage. If we don't have them listed with links, even if they're going to then be sent over to Board Docs, the public and even the Board members have difficulty accessing and finding those documents. So, and that's a whole nother issue for another discussion, because I'm having a lot of people in the public coming to me and saying they just simply can't find our reports anymore because they're not even listed as a link. So I think that's a really important takeaway. And now you get to go to your break.
Thank you, everyone.